To order, you could all rise for a moment of silence, please.
Thank you. If you could turn and face the flag for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, and
With the routine justice for all.
You may be seated. Clerk, would you call the roll call of council members, please?
Lehman.
Yes.
Podak.
Yes.
Cassidy.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Grine.
Yes.
Mendoza. Lake.
Motion to excuse Amy.
Anybody else?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to excuse Councilperson Mendoza by Baker, a second by Lehman. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman.
Yes.
Podak.
Yes.
Cassidy.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Grine.
Yes.
Councilperson Mendoza is excused.
I'll move to excuse Councilperson Lake.
All right, we have a motion by Lehman, a second by Baker to excuse Councilperson Lake. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Podak.
Yes.
Cassidy.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Grine.
Yes.
Mendoza? I'm sorry, Lehman?
Yes.
All right, Councilperson Lake is excused. Minutes of the previous meeting.
Pardon me?
Minutes of the previous meetings, is there anybody who would like to approve the previous meeting minutes?
Move to accept it.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion by Baker, a second by Grine to accept the video minutes of the previous meeting. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman.
Yes.
Podak.
Yes.
Cassidy.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Grine.
Yes.
Those minutes have been passed. Yes.
Pardon me? I have an ear.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Moving into communications.
Okay. Events coming up in Fosteria.
Oh, hang on, that's, I think that's probably the Public Affairs Committee.
Right? No, she's, she gave me this to say-
To say during communications or during the Public Affairs Committee? That's okay.
Okay.
That's okay, I just-
My bad.
I mean, you could technically do it now if you wanted, but I was gonna wait till Public Affairs Committee.
Okay.
The communication I have for you all tonight is that we, since we are down two council members, we can pass things, but we do not have enough of a majority to suspend any legislation to pass on emergency. So, so we can pass the items on a third reading. The rest of it, we just have to hear what's going on. So, there's not a quorum to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. So, report of committees, Finance Committee.
Nothing new to report, Mr. President. However, I will mention that the next meeting will be Tuesday, August 19th at 5:30 PM in council chambers.
All right, thank you. Public Affairs Committee, now you can go and tell us what's going on.
Events in Fosteria. Fosteria Community Arts Council having their last lunch on the lawn Wednesday, August 6th, from 2:00 to 1:00. Food is provided by Rivo Barbecue and live music by Melissa Pottinger. In case there's rain, they'll be at the banquet at 125 Main Street. Fosteria City Schools Back-to-School Bash will be Wednesday, August 6th, 5:00 to 7:00 in the Fosteria Junior and Senior High School West Parking Lot. A free community movie night at Jackson Park, Saturday, August 9th. Arrive anytime after 8:00 and bring lawn chairs, blankets, and snacks. The movie is Lilo and Stitch and will start at dusk. Fosteria Community Arts Council Summer Concert Series will be Sunday, August 10th, from 7:00 to 8:30. City Lights, which is a classic rock group, will perform at the Wayne Wright Amplithete in Foundation Park. Fosteria Farmer and Artisan Market, Saturday, August 16th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM downtown. It's titled Healthy Living and it's sponsored by ProMedica Fosteria Community Hospital. The Urban Woody's Brewery Summer Concert Series, Saturday, August 16th, from 6:00 to 10:00, featuring the Skittlebots. And last thing is upcoming public meeting regarding the South Town Street grade separation. It's gonna be Tuesday, August 26th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the Fosteria Learning Center.
Thank you. Law and Ordnance Committee.
Nothing new to report. However, the next meeting will be Tuesday, August 19th at 5:15 PM in council chambers.
Thank you. Report of officers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like to thank all the volunteers who turned out to help put together the equipment for the inclusive playground being constructed by Wood County Place. We had an excellent turnout and I appreciate all the help. Second, I'd like to thank the Ottawa and Dusky Seneca Solid Waste District for the grant that allowed us to purchase and install new signs at our city parks. And third, I would like to give some background on the PFAS legislation before you tonight. This information came to us from the Ohio Municipal League who presumably vetted the attorneys. This program is similar to the opioid program. I can also tell you that Fosteria is listed among the cities deemed likely to have PFAS in our water. They listed all the cities in Ohio and listed those that have already been identified and those that are most likely. Where they get their information, I have no idea.
Thank you. Director of Public Service and Safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. The park shelter roof is completed at Portage Park and that was thanks partially to a grant from the Wood County Park District. And that looks really nice out there if you hadn't gotten a chance to see that. And we'll be working on getting you some information for the Public Information Officer for ODOT because I know I'll be getting calls. And keep in mind, this is an ODOT project that'll be going on out here on Lytle Street and 23 South. So generally, there is a Public Information Officer that can have complaints routed to them to District 2. And we'll work on getting that information to you tomorrow, get that out, and also try to get some more information out. And we'll put it out on our Facebook page for people that have issues with the closure, the construction, and as it moves along. Because we always get those when, especially right now, because the only way around is to go down Columbus Avenue or a way out around. And I've seen a lot of people getting caught by trains so far. But it's part of the process to get those roads fixed. So, we'll get that to you directly. That's it for me. Thank you.
Director of Law.
Thank you. I also wanted to touch a little bit on the PFAS legislation that was sent out to you guys. So, the PFAS, that is those forever chemicals that is found in the majority of water. I don't want to cause alarm, having everyone think like, oh, my goodness, we have this contaminant in our water. So, this was, that law firm was referred to us by the Ohio Municipal League. That is for Phase 2 of these class action lawsuits. We are already involved in a number of these lawsuits for funds to remediate any issue. I will say that I have already submitted previous tests that we have had of our water and we have been found to be under that allowable limit. So, we're not, you know, in danger of, it's not a health hazard. However, if there is money out there and there is even a minuscule amount found in our water, then perhaps maybe this law firm could help us get some funds. So, that was sent to us, they were referred to us by the Ohio Municipal League. We didn't have any reason to question the legitimacy, so we just went ahead and put it before you guys. We were originally gonna ask you guys to pass that as an emergency because time, it is a time-sensitive thing because it's an ongoing lawsuit. However, that's a moot point, can't pass it by emergency tonight anyways, but I was gonna ask you not to anyways because I'd like to look into it a little more. If anyone looked at the retainer that they included, there were quite a few typos raised a bit of a red flag. So, I started doing some research and we'd like to look into this a little bit more to just confirm that legitimacy. But it's okay to go forward with the first reading today and, you know, we can come to a conclusion later on. So, other than that, I did the, our ballot measures for the levy was submitted to the Board of Elections and then submitted to the Secretary of State for their approval. That has been approved for the ballot, so we're all good to go there. And I think that's all I have.
I have questions.
Yes.
David Grossman, Associates. I just- Is 33% of the settlement, is that customary?
You know, honestly-
Some things I'm a little uneasy about.
Agreed, agreed. And that's why we'd like to look into it a little more. That's one of the many reasons why we'd like to look into it a little more. Again, we kind of rushed this through because we, the municipal leagues referred that, referred us to them unsolicited. We didn't, we didn't reach out saying, hey, you know, find us an attorney. It was sent out to, I think, all participants of the Ohio Municipal League saying, hey, this law firm is available for anyone that would like to go for these funds. Truthfully, I'm not sure if that is a reasonable percentage or not. I don't deal with sort of these class action contingency lawsuits. So, that will be one of the things that we'll look more into. So, I apologize for the rush on this. We should, I guess we shouldn't have assumed that the municipal league did all of the vetting.
Well, specifically on the dispersments, Item 2. The last sentence, it says, "At the time of settlement and distribution of proceeds, these expenses shall be deducted from the client's share after computation of the attorney's fees." However, and this makes me feel really nice. However, client will not be responsible for any expenses or cost which exceed client's proportional recovery.
Yeah. I mean, they make it sound real good. They emphasize that this would not cost anything on our end, that they would be financially responsible for all of the testing required and they would be fronting all of the upfront costs. And they would just, if we turn out to not qualify for any funds, they don't get any, we don't, we don't get any, they don't get any.
Well, I was trying to be sarcastic as far as that just-
I understand, yes.
I know it's hard to tell sometimes, but I thought it's so kind if you spend more and, but you're gonna limit us to how much we win. I can see how there could be no lose if you're on their side of the desk.
Yes. Again, we will, we'll be looking more into this. Again, I apologize for the rush and if it turns out we just need to let it die on the table, we'll let it die.
Mr. Cassidy, I can't speak to class action lawsuits, but I can tell you in an auto claim, if you seek an attorney to represent you in those cases, 1/3 is the standard.
Yeah, pretty much.
Standard. And I'm not saying that that should be the case here. It's just that that percentage rang true to that type of a case. So, I'll just offer that up as some background.
I slept through that class at law school.
Thank you. At this time, we will move into the public portion of the meeting. We have two people who request a time to speak. We'll start in the order they appear on the agenda. Ms. Deb Tyson.
Deb Tyson, 800 Woodward Avenue. I just wanted to let everyone know that I'm a great-grandmother now. I had my great-grandson, he was born July 20th, and he's healthy and so is his mommy, my granddaughter, my oldest. Also, it's been brought to my attention that a lot of people don't know about the resources we have and I direct them to the city page. I don't know nothing about the Facebook. I, Maddie's tried to help me, but it doesn't work for me. So, I've not been able to, I can't direct people to a place I can't get to. But the city webpage is very good and very excellent to help people. Pantry Plus, like any other pantry is struggling. They can use donations to help. There are lines, anytime you go, there are so many people needing and they have to qualify. So, that's even more people when you think about it. And I wish we knew something about the sharing kitchen because I think that would help a lot more people. The other thing I have to say is people, again, don't know what resources that we have. The city is doing a great job. But when I lost my brother, it affected me at work. So, they got a grief share at Good Shepherd and now they're gonna have the second one. And I was told I could tell it, August 26th it begins and it will run till just before Thanksgiving. It's every Tuesday at 2:00 PM. And it's in the basement down there. Most people know how to do that. It's free and they really do help. I completed the course, it has helped me. Again, I just wish that there was a way to help people find the resources. And like I said, your city webpage is great. The Facebook, well, we gotta figure out how to communicate that to the general public because I think that would be a help because a lot of people do Facebook. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Jill Filiator.
Good evening. My name is Jill Filiator, 402 West Culberson Street. Just have a few little tidbits. I want to say thank you first for the tree. There was a tree on the city property that was taken down a few weeks back as it was bad. But the gentleman, they did an excellent job. And as a result, I inquired and they're going to do some work on some of our trees. So, I do want to thank the city for addressing those trees. I know that Facebook has a wonderful way of saying things that might not be truly accurate. So, you have to be, understand that because this is one of my concerns and you have no control over it. But I've been told that my property in between the alley is being vacated and that, that we're going to be vacating it in a mutual agreement. And no, that isn't, both us, me and the new owner are not going to be vacating the property. But then it brings a concern because I'm seeing all these unmarked alleys that are being vacated and I don't know which ones they are. And I'm going to be requesting through the proper channels to make sure that somehow mine doesn't get on the list. But people on Facebook are misaccurate in saying that certain things are being done when they're not accurate and they're representing themselves as a media source. So, I just need to make sure that the people know here at the council that, you know, it would be nice, I noticed there's even more unmarked alleys that are being vacated, that in transparency, it would be nice, as you guys do in the three read, if it's identified as public records so people know what alleys you guys are talking about for being taken down. Also, just so everybody knows, there is an event coming on Friday, the 15th, from 7:00 to 9:00 here in downtown on Main Street. The Space Cats will be performing in the Off the Beaten Path Alley from 7:00 to 9:00. So, just make sure that it's marked down. It's sponsored by Downtown Re-Evented and it has been posted, but it just got sidebarred probably. So, just so that you know, it's a local group of guys and they're doing, gonna do a really great performance. It is in Adora, so bring your chairs and just partake. Last but not least, as I'm looking at this for my follow-ups for questions and concerns, I was checking with the downtown items. If we could possibly, when we're doing our things that are happening in town, if we could make sure that some of the business owners are made aware of some of the things going on. Again, erroneously posted on Facebook, it's saying that all the trees were being taken down and native trees were being put in place when that is not quite the total accurate concept. But so now everybody, including business owners, are like, ooh, I want my tree down, I want my tree down. And so, if there is communication with the business owners, we are all invested in improving the downtown. And you can see, I, as a businesswoman, is putting a lot of energy and monies into my buildings. I know that the Foster Block is putting a lot of money into their buildings. I know that the people that own the, down by my end are also. So, it would be really nice if you guys could just keep us in the loop as the business owners because without the business owners willing to put in that extra money to make the places look nicer and start getting business in there, we're not gonna be able to grow. And that's pretty much all I have to say. I know the park and rec, we had a wonderful time out there with the concession stand. And I do encourage that as you guys are growing, that maybe you think about opening up the park and rec for the season for ball in the concession area. Get it back open so that nonprofits can do their fundraising during the games because when they were doing their tournaments, you had 300-plus people down there. And it is just so awesome to see the park back to where it was, you know, 30 years ago when I was growing up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This time, we'll open up the public portion to any other person who would like to address council. We just ask that you state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
Well, Allison, 118 and 1/2 West Center Street, Department 2. This is just a reminder that we have a Records Commission meeting coming up on the 21st at 2:00 PM. And the, and if there are any entities that have records to be disposed of, they should bring them to the meeting. And the committee, which is the mayor, the finance director, the law director, and myself as a citizen member, will approve them and they can then be destroyed. This is just a reminder to that effect. The Records Commission is charged with disposing of old records according to the schedules for each entity. And we did quite a bit of that at the meeting in February, disposing of a lot of old records. So, if there are any questions, that's mine.
All right, thank you very much.
Hi, Leamanda Blair, 132 East Fourth Street. I'm having an issue with the neighbors. They are not taking care of their properties. One of my neighbors actually passed away in his home and there is a tree that has fallen through the roof. There's nobody living there. I don't think anybody's been in there to clean it out or anything. We are having issues with bugs, mice, and it's nonstop even in the nice weather. We have snakes all over. I have pictures if you would like to see them. We have a neighbor two doors down that is living in her camper with her children and has been for two years because her house was condemned. They have a dumpster sitting out back there that has not been dumped in at least over a year. I do have pictures where you can see that the vegetation has grown up around it, that dumpster has not moved. And I talked to Seneca County Environmental and his advice to me was, get on a preventative maintenance plan with an exterminator. I should not have to pay for this. I pay my property taxes. I should not have to deal with the other neighbors being disgusting and bugs and everything else coming into my home. So, if there's anything anybody can do, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Rebecca Kimball. Address is on the paper. I just have a couple concerns. One is that I know that some zoning laws, I believe, have changed with, like, with the grass, with the length. And I think my biggest question is, which has been one of my biggest concerns ever since I've been coming up here, is with the condemned house across the street and it's not been mowed at all this year. So, I don't want to say this and get in trouble, so I'll say boob-high instead of what I said at home. But it is boob-high. It's no longer waist-high, it's here. And that means more mosquitoes and stuff I don't want eating my garden up and whatever. So, I'm just like wondering what can be done with that because it was on the list to be torn down. So, that's really all I have.
Thank you. I think I saw the Safety Service Director writing some notes and he might follow up with. Mr. Kechler? Perfect. Thanks. Any other members of the public wish to address council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move into old business. The first item on old business remains tabled as we're awaiting the school board to work through that issue.
A resolution adopting a tentative tax budget commencing January 1st, 2026 pursuant to Section 5705.28A2 of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring an emergency.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Cassidy and a second by Baker to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman.
Yes.
Podak.
Yes.
Cassidy.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Grine.
Yes.
That passes, it becomes Resolution Number 2025-54.
An ordinance to adopt pursuant to Section 911.01-911.02 of the codified ordinances of the City of Fosteria, Ohio, the petition to vacate an unnamed alley in the 3rd Ward of the City of Fosteria.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Lehman, a second by Podak to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman.
Yes.
Podak.
Yes.
Cassidy.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Grine.
Yes.
Right, that ordinance carries, it's ordinance number 2025-55.
An ordinance to adopt pursuant to Section 911.01-911.02 of the codified ordinances of the City of Fosteria, Ohio, the petition to vacate an unnamed alley in the 4th Ward of the City of Fosteria.
That was the second reading of that ordinance. And just to clarify for the people, we had that question a few months ago. But all of our alleys are pretty much unnamed in the city, so that's how they get appeared for the legalese. But we'll try to do better in the future to at least identify the intersections they're close to because we've had those questions also.
A resolution authorizing, empowering, and directing the Director of Public Service and Safety acting as agent of the City of Fosteria to execute and deliver to the Seneca County Land Reutilization Corporation all necessary instruments to effect a good and sufficient conveyance of parcel of land from the City of Fosteria to the Seneca County Land Reutilization Corporation in the vicinity of Ohio Avenue.
That is the second reading of that ordinance resolution and it concludes old business. We will move into new business.
An ordinance authorizing, empowering, and directing the Director of Finance to apply for financing and enter into a lease purchase agreement and escrow agreement, if applicable, for a new street sweeper for the City of Fosteria and declaring an emergency to exist.
That was the first reading of that ordinance.
An ordinance adopting an amendment to the 2025 Financial Recovery Plan for the City of Fosteria and declaring an emergency.
That was the first reading of that ordinance.
An ordinance adopting and amending ordinance number 2024-105, permanent 2025 appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated funds in the General Fund and declaring an emergency to exist.
That was the first reading of that ordinance.
An ordinance authorizing the Director of Law to enter into a contract for legal representation in order to seek funds for PFAS, forever chemicals, water testing and remediation for potentially contaminated water in the City of Fosteria and declaring an emergency to exist.
That was the first reading of that ordinance.
An ordinance to amend the traffic, sorry, apologize. An ordinance to amend the traffic control map and file for the City of Fosteria and declaring an emergency.
That is the first reading of that ordinance. That also concludes new business. Is there a need to go into executive session this evening? Seeing none, is there any miscellaneous business this evening?
Mr. President, the finance director had needed those first three items in her new business with the three reading rules suspended. And I'm just wondering if anyone has any input to let us know if we, there's a need for a special meeting. I know when I look at the, the financial recovery plan was the second item and-
I know when I look at the, the Financial Recovery Plan was the second item, and the commission is set to meet next week. And I think we need that passed for that. Um, and I, I believe he told me that the, uh, the lease finance was-
Only the financial, uh, Financial Recovery Plan ordinance was one that he wanted passed without, without the three readings.
No, he told me all three.
Well-
But you think that's the most pressing one?
Right. We're, we're just gonna have to wait until the next meeting, and we're gonna have to, on that particular one, we're gonna have to address the Financial Recovery Plan, and if they will approve it, then we will approve it afterwards.
Then the commission will just have to choose a different date.
Yeah. We, we will let her know that, uh, we did not have a quorum-
Okay.
-quorum for that, so, um, if they want to reschedule that meeting, they can.
Okay. Thank you.
All three of those are related to this sweeper?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
So outside of the desire to have it pass as soon as possible, there's nothing that would require us to have a special meeting on those three to get it passed before the next meeting? No? Okay.
I don't think so.
Okay. Good question. Thank you. Any other miscellaneous business this evening? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
We have a motion by Cassidy, a second by Baker to adjourn. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Grine?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 6:31 PM.